Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Town of Lexington Council Meeting. This meeting is being held at Town Hall Monday evening, February 4th, 2019. This meeting is being broadcast live and will be replayed several times over the next week on the Town's Cable Information Channel 1301 and will also be available for viewing on the Town's website. I'm Steve McDougall, the Mayor of Lexington. At this time, I'd like to introduce to you my fellow council members. To my left is Mayor Protam Hazel Livingston.
Good evening.
To her left is Councilmember Todd Cornes.
Good evening.
To his left is Councilmember Steve Baker.
Good evening.
To my right is Councilmember Ron Williams.
Good evening.
To his right is Councilmember Todd Lyle.
Good evening.
Councilmember Kathy Manis is not with us this evening. She's had some surgery and is at home recovering. We're wishing her a speedy recovery and hope to have her back very soon. We know she's watching and is very intent on what we're doing tonight. So our thoughts and prayers go out to Kathy. At this time, I would like to welcome Pastor Richard Lang from the Harvest Church. Pastor Lang, very good to see you. If you would, offer invocation for tonight's meeting. Thanks for being with us.
Thank you. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you today for this beautiful day that you have given us, for the abundance of your love, your blessings that daily sustain us. I want to thank you tonight for the wonderful, beautiful, peaceful state of our city. It would be grateful if we could take credit for that, but so much of this comes from you. We thank you for Mayor McDougall and the dedicated team of city leaders that you have given us. So we ask that you continue to be with us, to guide us and direct us with wisdom that comes only from you. Let us remain a city that is under you, recognizing without you, we cannot accomplish anything. We thank you for the blessings of 2018, and we ask that this new year that you have given us exceeds every expectation that we could ever have. This we ask in the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen. Pastor Lang, thank you very much. Thank you for being with us. Pleasure to see you. At this time, I will ask Officer Hobbs if you would lead us into Pledge of Allegiance if everyone was still. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Sergeant Hobbs. At this time, I will call the meeting to order. At this time, I would like to present the 2019 State of the Town Address. We have produced a video again this year to highlight the 2018 achievements. The video also spotlights many of the upcoming projects that you will see around town this year. Before we get started, the video will play here in the council chambers and on the Town's Spectrum Community Access Channel 1301. Citizens will be able to view replays on the Town's website. I would also like to thank our very own Digital Media Coordinator, Darryl Pritchard, for your time and effort in tonight's event, and Jennifer Dowden, our Events and Media Coordinator, for all the time that y'all spent putting this video together. At this time, I will present the 2019 State of the Town. I'm Mayor Steve McDougall. Welcome to the State of the Town Address and a capsule of our town's accomplishments in 2018 and an outline of 2019's goals. I want to take time to recount the progress we made last year along with the projects council and I will execute this year and beyond. First, it is a continued privilege and honor to serve as your mayor, and I look forward to continuing to lead the Town of Lexington. At this time, I would like to acknowledge my fellow council members. Mayor Protam Hazel Livingston. Councilwoman Kathy Manis. Councilman Todd Cornes. Councilman Ron Williams. Councilman Steve Baker. And Councilman Todd Lyle. Along with all of our staff and their dedication to the Town of Lexington, these men and women are the backbone of this top-notch community. I look forward to seeing what we can achieve together in 2019. As we prepare for spring, let's take a moment to shine a light on a few of the major accomplishments from this past year. 2018 was a significant year of turning our vision into reality in the Town of Lexington. Most notably, we completed our first traffic and tourism project funded by the hospitality tax, the one-way pair system throughout downtown Lexington. This long-awaited project became operational this past summer and has made traffic flow at the intersection of Main Street at Lake Drive more efficient. By splitting the northbound and southbound movements, the signals at Lake Drive and Church Street can service twice as many vehicles. This allows for more green signal time to be allotted to East and West Main Street at Lake Drive and Church Street. In addition to the one-way pairs, we have opened town parking lots on South Church Street housing 150 spaces servicing the Lexington Municipal Complex, Palmetto Collegiate Institute, Virginia Hilton Park, and the Ice House Amphitheater. A primary reason for the high quality of life found in the Town of Lexington is from the service of our stellar Police Department. Led by Chief Terrence Green, the department received the Gold Standard Award for the Commission on Accreditation of Law Enforcement, which first awarded accreditation to the Lexington Police Department in 2009. Additionally, the department was awarded the DUI Agency of the Year from the South Carolina Department of Public Safety, which was also previously won in 2013 and 2015. Finally, the achievements of the individual officers are also being recognized as Patrolman First Class Nick Thompson was named DUI Officer of the Year from the South Carolina Department of Public Safety for excelling in the area of DUI arrests, DUI victim service, and anti-underage drinking programs. It is an honor to call the men and women of the Lexington Police Department the cream of the crop. Thank you for your continued service in making our town one of the safest communities in South Carolina. Families have been able to enjoy nights out on the town at our safe, friendly atmosphere of the Ice House Amphitheater. Completing our second year, the venue has now hosted 75 events and welcomed over 60,000 guests. In addition to our signature concert series, Lexington Live, we have presented Lexington School District One art showcases, Movies in the Park, and the 246th Army Band with Fireworks to celebrate Independence Day. We have also welcomed to the stage Platinum Recording Artist Sister Hazel and Top 40 Recording Artist and South Carolina native Edwin McCain. We look forward to continued success and bringing quality entertainment to the Town of Lexington. Learn more at IceHouseAmphitheater.com. The Town of Lexington is also committed to bringing safety to our citizens through state-of-the-art utility infrastructure. Exactly one year ago, the Town took over the I-20 wastewater treatment facility formerly run by Carolina Water Service. The transition of this facility to the Town of Lexington is the realization of many years of effort by the Town, the Central Midlands Council of Governments, other regional municipal and county governments, state and federal environmental regulators, and concerned citizens to fully implement a regional sewer system to improve water quality and safeguard our natural waterways in accordance with the Clean Water Act of 1972. Within the first month of ownership, the Town of Lexington diverted all flow from the I-20 wastewater treatment facility to the Joint Wastewater Treatment Facility in Casey, officially eliminating discharge previously polluting the Saluda River. Our commitment to the new 2,300 customers we serve includes substantial planned investment in sewer infrastructure rehabilitation and improvements over the next five years to ensure the sewer system meets high environmental safety and service standards. Additionally, the Town of Lexington is making technological advancements through upgrades of the MI net meter reading system, which is being installed to our 9,000 water customers. This system will allow staff remote access to read usages from their office. We have also expanded our GIS system field applications, allowing staff to remote access from mobile devices to look up utility infrastructure information such as water leaks and stormwater facilities. The Finance Department was recently awarded Government Finance Officers Association's Comprehensive Annual Finance Report Award for the 20th straight year and for the ninth straight year, the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. Through these national awards, the Town reinforces transparency and full disclosure of our financial health. It is important to note the continual growth in the number of business licenses issued in the Town as well as the growth in retail sales. In 2018, the Town issued 4,190 business licenses. This is a 3.8% increase in the net new businesses. Finally, there was a $2.4 billion total gross sales reported this past year. These facts combined with continued economic growth through construction and annexation support the notion that the Town continues to evolve from the bedroom community that it once was to a vibrant commercial and industrial center. It has become very obvious, the Town of Lexington is the place where citizens want to live, work, play, and learn. These particular projects strengthen how our proactive, progressive vision and planning is continuing to create an outstanding, vibrant, and livable community, not only for today but for future generations, our children and our grandchildren. Clearly, we've had some extraordinary advancements in this past year, but there's always more work that can and will be done. Here are a few of the ambitious projects we will focus on into 2019 and beyond. Council staff and I are continuously looking to alleviate traffic congestion. In addition to the projects we have already implemented, the Town also has two more hospitality tax transportation projects in the works. First, the Crossroad Improvements Project will focus on North Lake Corridor, starting at the end of the one-way pair to the North Lake Drive at Sunset Boulevard intersection. The improvements will provide safety and operational upgrades to the corridor, which serves 40,000 cars per day. Phase one will see the widening of North Lake Drive from the one-way pair split at Church Street to the existing Drer Street. Plans have been submitted and are awaiting SCDOT approval, which places our anticipated construction starting this summer. Additional phases include the Harmon Street extension and relocation of Drer Street to North Lake Drive at Azalea Drive, along with tying together the corridor through improvements from the existing Drer Street to North Lake Drive at Sunset Boulevard. Our third hospitality project focuses on improvements at Corley Mill at Sunset Boulevard Gateway. The goal of this project is to improve current traffic flow through this intersection, which serves as the primary gateway to the Town. Currently, the average daily traffic count on Sunset Boulevard is approximately 45,000 vehicles per day, and on Corley Mill Road, 9,100 vehicles per day. Phase one of this project is the I-20 westbound ramp improvement, which includes modifications to the traffic patterns in order to reduce or eliminate travelers exiting the ramp and crossing multiple lanes of traffic in an attempt to make a left turn at Jenny Lane. The improvements call for allowing motorists to make a right turn at the westbound ramp signal and proceed to the left turn lane for Jenny Lane. Additionally, two right turn lanes from Jenny Lane onto Sunset Boulevard are anticipated to be complete and operational by April. The Town of Lexington is also beginning Phase Two of our adaptive computerized signalization system, which will include 16 intersections. The project went to bid in January, and we anticipate our notice to proceed in March with an approximate timeline of an 18-month completion. In addition to having all 35 intersections in the Town on the system, we are collaborating with the Lexington Medical Center to include the 10 intersections in campus proximity. This project is currently out to bid, and we anticipate proceeding by the spring. We are also continuing our efforts with beautification of our parks. First, we are working with the Army Corps of Engineers, FEMA, and SCDHEC in the rebuilding of the Gibson Pond Dam. Plans have been submitted for design review. Once approved, we expect permitting to be issued, allowing us to begin the long-awaited construction with an anticipated reopening in the fall of 2019. It is our vision to not only bring back the safety of the dam to our community, but to restore the pond to its natural state so citizens can enjoy its beauty. The Town has also created a design plan to provide a 21st-century facelift to our oldest and most utilized green space, Virginia Hilton Park. Currently, the park is 6.5 acres sitting on 12 Mile Creek with amenities including gazebos, staging area, playground, several gardens, and a special needs playground for wheelchair-bound persons. The proposed expansion will include an additional 8.25 acres. To help fund the renovations, a Virginia Hilton Park Committee was formed and hosted the first event, the Hops and Harvest Craft Beer Festival, raising $4,000. Additionally, the Lexington Beautification Foundation has committed $200,000 for upgrades. The environment will provide a playful, social, and recreational space for all ages. Council's goal is to preserve the qualities that make Virginia Hilton Park so special while serving as a safe haven and healthy green space promoting a friendly, caring community inclusive to all our citizens for generations to come. The Town of Lexington is also tackling capital improvement projects. With the addition of the Town Maintenance Facility anticipated to be fully operational in late spring, the location will house the Utilities Department staff along with providing much-needed equipment storage for our parks and sanitation, police, transportation, and utilities departments. By having one centralized location, we will be able to create additional parking at Town Hall and a secure, protected area for all of our equipment. Additionally, the Cromer Road Pump Station will open this summer to increase the wastewater pumping capacity to 12.5 million gallons a day flowing to the Joint Wastewater Treatment Plant on the Congaree River. Future plans include a 30-inch parallel line to also tie in to the joint facility. Finally, I am excited to announce the Town of Lexington has gained a higher education presence with the opening of the University of South Carolina Palmetto College Transfer Center at the Lexington Middle School, which operates from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. on Tuesdays and Thursdays in Building 400, Area 11. That's the Abbey Lane side of the middle school building. This site will greatly enhance educational opportunities for adult and non-traditional students within the area to complete a four-year degree. Lexington County is one of the fastest-growing communities in the state, and this new location will enable USC Palmetto College to serve more adult and working students who are seeking to complete their bachelor's degree within our community. USC Palmetto College, providing a location in the Town of Lexington, will lead to better educational outcomes in the area for the students they serve and provide citizens the opportunity to learn more about bachelor's degree completion or tackle new subjects to advance their career path. Additionally, our children are served by one of the premier school districts in the state. Through USC Palmetto College and USC's Sumter Collaboration with Lexington School District One, our future workforce now has the opportunity to start their collegiate education prior to leaving high school through dual credit programs. This gives students greater flexibility and choices by providing a higher opportunity for success in the completion of their education and advancing their future careers. To emphasize our dynamic community, we provide a wide-ranging calendar of events and activities throughout the year. The Town of Lexington, along with the Lexington County Recreation and Aging Commission, hosts several events, including the Flashlight Easter Egg Hunt, Movies in the Park, and the Snowball Festival, along with highlighting charitable senior programs such as Meals on Wheels and Project Warmth. Additionally, the Lexington County Stadium, run by the Commission, was placed on a national stage as it was home to the Coastal Plain League's 2018 All-Star Show hosted by the Lexington County Blowfish. The calendar also is comprised of the Lexington County Chili Cook-Off, St. Patrick's Shamrock Parade, Kids' Day of Lexington, Lexington Wine Walk, Lexington Farmer's Market, Lexington Police Department's Fall Fest, and the Lexington Hops and Harvest Festival. In addition to these signature events, the Town is proud to support homegrown efforts like the Lexington Community Band and the Lexington County Museum, providing entertainment for the entire family. We hope to see you around town for these wonderful events. The Town aspires to engage the public through an all-inclusive communication and marketing campaign. Make sure to stay informed with the Town news and events through our website, Town Topics Newsletter, our social media pages of Facebook, Twitter, YouTube, and our Community Access Station 1301 on Spectrum Cable, which is airing this State of the Town Address and Council Meeting live. Additionally, the Lexington Police Department has their own social media pages of Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram, while the Ice House Amphitheater can be found on Facebook and Instagram. We are genuinely astounded by how many projects that have come to the realization since we implemented the Vision Plan less than seven years ago. This State of the Town Address echoes the impressive work that is being done and how we can lead our community forward respectfully and responsibly. Each employee at the Town of Lexington has added valuable guidance to the achievements we have seen tonight, and I want to thank them all in making our community a place you want to live, work, play, and learn. Lexington is my hometown, and I'm still astounded to see how many positive leaps we have taken through the years. I wish that all of you have a continued healthy, happy, and prosperous 2019. God bless you, your family, our Town, the State of South Carolina, and our great nation, the United States of America. That is the State of the Town for 2019. Thank you very much for being here and watching that. I hope you enjoyed it as much as I did making it and I hope you enjoyed watching as much as I did making it. As you can see, we accomplished a lot in a very short period of time, but we have a lot of work yet to be done that will be done this year and beyond. At this time, we'll take a brief 10-minute recess so that we can accommodate our news media here with us tonight. Thank you and welcome back. Thank you for that brief timeout. At this time of the meeting, I would like to report on our executive session this evening. During executive session this evening, we discussed the following items. We had two legal issues, one issue regarding pending litigation, and one issue was advice regarding agenda items. We had three contractual issues, one downtown economic development issue, one issue regarding a pending contract, and one issue regarding road improvement options. We had two personnel items, one was a boards and commissions appointments, and another routine personnel review. No vote was taken in executive session this evening other than to vote to adjourn executive session. Do I have a motion to ratify the Mayor's Executive Session Report?
Send it.
Mayor Protam makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Williams, second motion. All is a favor. Please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Deletions on the agenda, there is one item on the agenda that will be deleted tonight as item number three in new business. If we can, please delete that from the agenda tonight. At this time, we will go right into presentations. I want to welcome Representative Chris Wood, who is here with us tonight, who joins Chief Terrence Green for a presentation, a letter of commendation for special presentation. Sergeant Bill Hobbs, if you would, please join us at the microphone.
You're the mayor on yield to the representative, so I'm letting him go first.
Look at that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for having me. Councilmembers, thanks for just allowing me to be here for this great honor for me. It's not only just an honor for me to be here, obviously, as our state representative for Lexington District 69, but also as a personal friend of Bill Hobbs, to be able to give this award to him for his duty, going beyond the call of duty as well. And I'll tell you a story real quick, Bill, going beyond the call of duty. I also did that today, as you'll see this expensive frame, because I had one, and true story, my dog got a hold of it. So I went to my daughter's room, and I pulled a picture off the table, and I put this in. So I owe you a frame, but I could not come without one. So with that being said, I went beyond the call of duty today myself, but I want to honor Sergeant Hobbs tonight, just to let you know, on behalf of the House of Representatives and Speaker Jay Lucas, to commend Sergeant Hobbs of the Lexington Police Department for his assistance rendered in a critical situation concerning the birth of a baby. Sergeant Hobbs answered a call on December 17th, and when he got there, he apparently had to put on his catcher's mitt and go to work. He was not expecting to see what he saw as the lady was already giving birth and the baby had crowned. After three short pushes, he wrapped the baby himself in a towel and handed the baby to the mother, which this crucial situation could have gone very bad had it not been for the experience and the courage and the go-get attitude that Bill Hobbs has always had. And we are honored to have him as not only one of our few and proud in Lexington, but as a friend of Lexington, because I've known him for quite some time, and he's not only been that to this situation, but to many more. So with that being said, on behalf of the state House of Representatives, Mr. Hobbs, thank you very much for your service.
We'll send it off, so if I get the mayor to come down, we're gonna present Hobbs one of our highest commendations, chief commendation, and we don't give these out every day, but we did one, we did today, we gave this to my senior. But we want to present this to whatever, all the stuff, great things he said. But just imagine, come to a situation, and you saw what you saw, and you know birth was coming. I don't know if I'll be able to sit there and do that, but I'm glad that you were in the road and you were able to catch that baby, because that's something we all do. In the 26 years I've been here, this is only the second time this has happened. So I think you should count yourselves as blessed, because a lot of people don't see life come to this world. So count yourself as blessed, but we will present this award. I'm gonna have the mayor hand it to you, and right okay, we're gonna take a picture, then we're gonna invite your family, his wife, and his son is here, four pictures, and we go live. All right.
Your frame is not quite as nice as mine.
(laughter)
Hobbs, can you bring that other one out too?
Yes, please, by this side.
Okay.
Yeah, get one of them out here.
No, I'm good.
Good.
Set.
Please.
Thank you, sir.
Few words.
(laughter)
I'm pretty much speechless, Mr. Mayor. I don't know what to say. I was totally not expecting this, especially an award where I got two challenge coins at one time here.
You don't get that, bro.
I'd like to thank everybody that was... I was totally not expecting this, especially an award where I got two challenge coins at one time here.
You don't get that, bro.
I'd like to thank everybody that was out there that day, all the EMS personnel that came after everything had happened or during everything had happened. And Corporal Nick Bezzel was on scene, and he assisted, and he did a great job. It was a life-changing moment, there's no doubt about that. But I'm just very happy and honored to be a part of the department and to have a chief that thinks this much of me. So I want to thank him and thank the rest of the department, too, and of course, the distinguished representative here. I was not expecting that. Thank you very much, sir.
Yeah, come on, Hobbs family, y'all come on up. Let's get a picture with y'all. And thank y'all for sharing Bill with us and letting him come to work every day. He's a wonderful officer, and we're happy to have him and also very lucky to have him on. Let him take one picture first.
Hobbs.
My other frame, you know.
Very good.
Did you get one?
Yeah. Come on back there. Y'all come on back. Sergeant Hobbs, thank you. Congratulations.
Mayor, I hope this is appropriate. May I just say one word?
Certainly, please.
Please forgive me, I've known Bill from us 30 years. I'm going to get a little emotional. What you may not know is how they've taken this family under their wing. They are forever going to be linked, and they have welcomed this family into their home, and they've taken them into part of their family. And that, you hear so many things about police officers that are not positive, but you rarely hear this kind of story. He would never say a word about it, and I've totally embarrassed the family, and I'm probably not going to be invited back for anyone, but I want you to know how much this has touched this family's life.
That is fantastic. Thank you, Bill. What a great guy you are.
Thank you, sir.
We'll give you all a minute if you'd like.
We need someone to direct him around.
He can do it now, I've seen him do it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Sergeant Hobbs. At this time, we will move right into public hearings. Public hearing speakers are limited to five minutes. Our first item tonight, public hearing, final reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map Number 3500-04-041 located at 4765 Sunset Boulevard. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Joyce Harris owns 1.6 acres located at 4765 Sunset Boulevard and has petitioned to annex the property. John Harris Body Shop is located on this site. Properties in the town near this one are zoned general commercial, and Sunset Boulevard is classified as an arterial road. The planning commission reviewed this annexation during their December meeting and recommended the same zoning and road classification for this partial. I make a motion for final reading of approval for this.
Mayor Protem makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Williams, second. Some motion, is there further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Mr. Baker.
Be recusing myself from this one again.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Baker, recuses himself from voting on this matter. Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of old business is from Councilmember Todd Carnes, final reading of an ordinance annexing portions of Lexington County Tax Map Number 4300-04-026 and 048 located on Cherokee Trail. Councilmember Todd Carnes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. TriPlo LLC owns 38.75 acres on two parcels located on Cherokee Trail and has petitioned to annex a portion of the properties. The portions to be annexed consist of a sewer easement being used for an 86-unit subdivision on Cherokee Trail. Properties in town near these properties are zoned high-density residential and protected residential. Cherokee Trail is classified as a local road. The planning commission reviewed this annexation during their December meeting and recommended protected residential 2 zoning for the property and local road classification for Cherokee Trail. Mr. Mayor, make a motion for final reading approval.
Mr. Carnes makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Lyle, second. Some motion, any further discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Carnes.
May I ask, Mr. Hanson, just for clarification on this particular proposed subdivision, just for my clarification, I think this was approved, the subdivision itself was approved through the county?
Yes, sir, that is correct. We did work with the developer through that process in anticipation of it being annexed, though. It didn't have to go through the planning commission process.
So as it went through, then, are there any variances from our standards related to sidewalk setbacks, any of those things?
The subdivision will have sidewalks in it. The question was brought up last month about the green space. It meets the amount of green space necessary, so it's, we're all intents and purposes, it meets our standards. The only perhaps question would be what kind of amenities they are having a park area in there, we would have discussed in the planning commission, but for everything else, it meets our requirements.
All right. And you seem, you had a little hesitation on the green space, is that because?
Well, the land development ordinance requires at least 20% of the project to be dedicated to green space, and of that, half of it has to be active green space. They are, they have 24% of the property as green space, we just don't have the information about what type of amenities they're going to have in their park area. So that would be the only.
In the active green space?
In the active green space.
So what is our ability to enforce that active green space becomes?
When it's permitted in the county, then there is no ability. I mean, they are building the project now, it's just a matter of whether we're going to bring it down or not.
So we, so we effectively have no recourse if?
It's a permitted project that they have vested rights in to build, so.
So.
So they are building it now.
So is there, is there anything we could have done along the way to not wind up in this position and make sure that we had some type of recourse if the active green space was not completed as active green space in the way that, or not, yeah, not, so that it didn't meet the requirement?
At the time that the development process started in the county, the property was not contiguous, so as they developed it, we found a mechanism to get contiguous so that it can be annexed. Like I said, they've already got it permitted, they got their DHEC permits, so they have a right to build what they were permitted.
Have you seen a plan for the park? When you say a park?
Not for the park, no. I've seen, there's a site layout in your package that shows where it will be, but it doesn't describe what the amenities will be.
In our internal language, when we talk about active green space, do we have that pretty clearly delineated what that, what meets that requirement, what doesn't meet? I mean, can you just have kind of landscaped area?
The code says active, it says something to the effect of active green space, including pools, tennis courts, or other amenities approved by the approving authority, which in this case would be the planning commission. So the planning commission has approved, the Zinkar Road subdivision, for example, has a community park with a playground in it. So they have approved that, they have approved walking trails. They have also, I think there's probably a preference for something more than that, but they have approved those in the past.
Okay. Can we, will you make a note and maybe put that on our next work session for us to try to tighten up our language on active green space so that we could maybe try to give a little more definition to that? That's what I need. Thank you, sir.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Williams.
Mr. Hanson, it's my understanding we don't have to annex this property, so we could push it back till our next meeting and have time for you to discuss with the developer what the active green space is going to be.
The developer's here if you want to ask him.
Mr. Carnes, would you like to?
Who's here? Frank? Yeah, let's ask Frank.
Oh, we know who he lives. We know what he drives.
So, Mr. Baker, can you address what active green space you're going to put in this development?
Yes, sir. The plan was submitted 86 lots, and it's been cut down to 84, I believe is the final number. And there's a large area back by, in a cul-de-sac, in a tinsel pond, we got this green space. We do plan to put a playground, similar to what John was talking about, they're doing at Zinkar Road, and some sort of covered area like a gazebo or something like that. That is the active area we plan to put there.
So no swimming pool, tennis courts, or?
If y'all are familiar with, y'all know where I live, in the Gertie Place subdivision, it's going to be very similar with patio component to a single-family component, much like Orchard Point as well, Old Mountain Springs, and Cheltenham, by the way.
But if I'm correct, I believe your neighborhood does have a swimming pool?
Yes. Not many people use it.
Right.
So.
Yes, sir, Mr. Carnes.
Just trying to get my mind around the numbers. This is 38.75? There's two different parcels, aren't there? The overall development is how big, Frank? Do you know?
I don't have the plan in front of me, I can't remember off the top of my head. I want to say it was like 31 acres, 33 acres total. Does that sound right?
Yeah, there's, well, the 38.75, is that the total?
Look at item three, I think you're on two.
Let me get that number. Yeah, 30.
30.89.
Yeah, 30.89. So it's about, so really, the active space is only, the active space required is 10% of that, so three acres. Am I right on that, John?
Yes, sir.
All right. So on three acres, you're going to do a playground and like a covered area, and like the rest of?
If you got your packets at the end of that cul-de-sac, after you come in and turn left and turn right. And it will have sidewalks.
Okay. So in that, if I'm seeing that active, the active green space area, right, it's right there in the corner, right off the left turn, I got a tiny little site plan here. Yeah, yeah. So in a scenario like that, just curious, like that'll be, I mean, you guys will clear that, you'll landscape that, and you'll put a park out there or some playground equipment and a covered area, but it'll all be kind of cleared and landscaped?
Yes.
All right. That's what I was curious about. Unfortunately, we have no way to hold you to that, and I hate that process, but we can trust you.
Well, we're working now, I'm working right now with our landscaper on the entrance as well as that area to come up with some sort of plan. I've worked with John through this whole process, this has been a year-long process to get it close to getting contiguous to be annexed in, which is, as we grow from the planning commission, they're looking at, we're trying to get everything we can around there so we can control it, as you say.
Right.
We worked many, many months to get to this point, so.
Yeah, that's, well, that's helpful. That answers my question, and I think that's, I mean, for me, that's sufficient. I would just like to note, though, that as a council, we would like for us to explore every opportunity available so that we never wind up in this position of only being able to depend on what a guy says on Monday night. Obviously, I know you'll follow through, and that doesn't concern me this time, it's just awkward position for planning commission and for us.
Thank you for the con words.
There's some ideas, there's some ideas we can get there with, but thanks, Frank, appreciate it.
Very good. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of old business is from Councilmember Ron Williams, final reading of an ordinance annexing portions of Lexington County Tax Map Number 4300-04-055 and 182 located on Cherokee Trail. Councilmember Williams.
Thank you, counsel, Mr. Mayor. Essex Land Development Incorporated owns 30.89 acres on two parcels located on Cherokee Trail and has petitioned to annex 30.42 acres of the property. The portions to be annexed are shown as track 1 and 2A on the attached survey. Essex Homes is constructing 86 units subdivision on the property. Properties in the town near this property are zoned high-density residential and protected residential. Cherokee Trail is classified as a local road. The planning commission reviewed this annexation during their December meeting and recommended protected residential 2 zoning for this property and local road classification for Cherokee Trail. Make a motion for final reading approval.
Councilmember Williams makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Baker, second, set motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of old business is from Councilmember Steve Baker, final reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map Number 5496-04-111 located at 133 Vera Road. Councilmember Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and counsel. Lone Wolf Properties LLC owns 1.33 acres located at 133 Vera Road and has petitioned to annex the property. A crane repair facility is being located on the site. Properties in-
I mean, you guys will, will clear that, you'll landscape that, and you'll put a park out there, or some playground equipment in a covered area, but it'll all be kind of cleared and landscaped?
Yes.
All right. That's what I was curious about. Unfortunately, we have no way to hold you to that, and I hate that process, but we can trust you.
Well, we're, we're working now, I'm working right now with our landscaper on the entrance as well as that area to come up with some sort of plan. And I've worked with John through this whole process. This has been a, a year-long process to get it close to getting contiguous to be annexed in, which is, as we grow from the planning commission, they're looking at it, we're, we're trying to get everything we can around there, so we can control it, as you say.
Right.
We worked many, many months to get to this point, so.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, well, that's helpful. That, uh, that answers my question, and I think that's, I mean, for me, that's sufficient. I would just like to note, though, that as a council, uh, we'd like for us to explore every opportunity available, so that we never wind up in this position of only being able to depend on, on what a guy says on Monday night. Obviously, I, I know you'll follow through, and, uh, that doesn't concern me this time, it's just, it's just awkward position for planning commission and for us.
Thank you for the kind words.
There, there's some ideas, there's some ideas we can get there with, but thanks, Frank. Appreciate it.
Very good. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of old business is from Councilmember Ron Williams, final reading of an ordinance, annexing portions of Lexington County tax map, number four-three-zero-zero dash zero-four dash zero-five-five and one-eight-two located on Cherokee Trail. Councilmember Williams?
Thank you, counsel, Mr. Mayor. Essex Land Development Incorporated owns thirty point eight-nine acres on two parcels located on Cherokee Trail, and has petitioned to annex thirty point four-two acres of the property. The portions to be annexed are shown as track one and two A on the tracks attached survey. Essex Homes is constructing eighty-six units subdivision on the property. Properties in the town near this property are zoned high-density residential and protected residential. Cherokee Trail is classified as a local road. The planning commission reviewed this annexation during their December meeting and recommended protected residential two zoning for this property and local road classification for Cherokee Trail. Make a motion for final reading approval.
Councilmember Williams makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Baker, second to that motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of old business is from Councilmember Steve Baker, final reading of an ordinance, annexing Lexington County tax map, number five-four-nine-six dash zero-four dash one-one, located at one-thirty-three Vera Road. Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and counsel. Lone Wolf Properties LLC owns one point three-three acres located at one-thirty-three Vera Road, and has petitioned to annex the property. A crane repair facility is being located on the site. Properties in town near this one are zoned industrial, and Vera Road is classified as a local road. The planning commission reviewed this annexation during their December meeting and recommended the same zoning and road classification for this parcel. I make a motion for final reading approval.
Councilmember Baker makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Lyle, second to that motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of old business is from Councilmember Todd Lyle, final reading of an ordinance, rezoning of one-ninety-one Kaufman Farm Lane. Councilmember Todd Lyle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Springbelt Development has requested to rezone a portion of one-ninety-one Kaufman Farm Lane from limited commercial to protected residential two. The request is being made to allow the property to be developed into a forty-seven unit subdivision. Properties adjacent to this one are zoned general commercial and protected residential. The planning commission reviewed this rezoning during their June meeting and recommended approval of the request. Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion for a final reading approval.
Councilmember Lyle makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Baker, second to that motion. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, Mr. Lyle.
Just like to, I think, point out, and speaking with developers, it's my understanding, if we could just confirm, uh, John, that this is, you know, very low density on the traffic with this particular piece of property, it could have been significantly worse. Is that right?
This is actually a down zoning for the property.
Right.
Limited commercial.
Okay. And the anticipation is that it would be not very, it would not impact traffic hardly at all, based on what?
That was a large topic of conversation with the plan with, before the planning commission, which was approved by the planning commission, Mr. Collins.
All right. That's all I had. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. At this time, we will move into new business. Our first item of new business is from Mayor Protem Hazel Livingston, first reading of an ordinance, annexing Lexington County tax map, number five-four-two-two dash zero-two dash zero-one-four, located at two-zero-nine dash B Parker Street. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. IBW Local Union seven-seven-two owns point three-seven acres located at two-oh-nine dash B Parker Street, and has petitioned to annex the property. The meeting office is located on the site, and properties in the town near this are zoned protected residential and high-density residential. Parker Street is classified as a local road. The planning commission reviewed this annexation during their January meeting and recommended protected residential zoning for the property and local road classification for Parker Street. I make a motion for first reading of approval.
Mayor Protem makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Williams, second to that motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Todd Collins, first reading of an ordinance, annexing Lexington County tax map, number four-three-zero-zero dash zero-four dash zero-one-eight located on Citizens Drive. Councilmember Todd Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. PLCW Trust owns two-point-nine-four acres located on Citizens Drive behind nine-nineteen North Lake Drive, and has petitioned to annex the property. A forty-three unit age-restricted apartment facility is being planned on the site. Properties in town near this one are zoned general commercial and high-density residential. Citizens Drive is classified as a collector road. The planning commission reviewed this annexation during their January meeting and recommended annexing the property with a high-density residential zoning classification and a planned unit development special overlay. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion for first reading approval.
Councilmember Collins makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Lyle, second to that motion. Any further discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Williams.
Mr. Anson, I know in the planning meeting for the, uh, planning commission, I just realized Mr. Frost was sitting behind your chair, did we, did we, uh, did we stipulate that they have to put the sidewalks?
The plan that's in your package has the sidewalks drawn on.
I can't see that.
I'm sorry, I'm really sorry. Yes. We have a plan with sidewalks on.
Going out the backside to the?
Going out to North Point and coming down Citizens Drive.
Super. Thank you. That print's too small.
Any further discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Collins.
This is, uh, this is a pretty close proximity to a, a similar development that's on Northwoods. And just noticing the parking requirements, I think it says, it's actually in our next item, uh, but the parking requirements for this were significantly downgraded, uh, one point two-five per bedroom. I mean, do we have some experience with the other development on Northwoods to say that this is a workable solution? Uh, I guess that means that significant number of these people are, are walkers, just, uh, there was quite a bit of give on the PUD, so can somebody just help me understand all of that?
I can, I can add. We, we do have experience with these projects. These are, these tax credit projects. There are, this will be the fourth in town, so the one on Library Hill, behind the library is one, the condom project that's under construction next to the Kmart, and then the one that you mentioned on Northwoods, those are all exist, either existing or under construction. Some have been in town for years, so we do have a fair amount of experience with them. And I, Randy, I believe, is here and can probably speak to the traffic, but yes, they have a significantly lower traffic impact, not only from parking, but just from vehicular traffic, because a lot of people there don't drive. But.
Yeah, I mean, I know we have the one right there on Northwoods, and I, I don't know what kind of parking requirements we put on that per unit. I think this one was one point two-five per unit. Uh, and just wanted to confirm, I mean, when, when I've been buying the one on Northwoods, I've never seen it full, but I don't know what their ratios were.
And, and I don't know that off the top of my head. John or Randy might know that. Um, I do think it was reduced significantly.
The one on, the one on Northwood, uh, met the requirements. The one next to Kmart was reduced to spaces per unit.
So, I mean, does it, does it cause anybody here any concern that this is such a low one point two-five spaces per unit? If, if historically as low as we've gone is two? If, if I heard that right?
We, this was a topic of discussion with the planning commission, and, um, which is why they agreed to put in sidewalks, because they may have a lot of walkers. We went to two on the PUD, on K, on the Kmart property, because that's what they asked for. Uh, this particular developer, um, presented information with other projects that they had that, uh, supported one point two-five, based on their clientele, so the planning commission felt like that was insufficient.
And I would say, just by observation, the one on Northwood does have significant vacant spaces at almost all times, you know, just purely out of observation. You know, I don't know what its capacity is, but if we're building more of them, I assume it's, there's a need, so I'm assuming it's pretty full. The parking lot is not full, so. And as it pertains to traffic, these units typically don't generate peak hour trips, you know, due to the clientele that are using those units.
Right. Yeah, I mean, and I know we, we went through all that with, uh, with the one near Kmart, about the, uh, the traffic concerns, and, and very few trips. That's the only thing that caught my attention.
What about the buffers, from a hundred feet to fifteen feet?
You're a buffer guy.
Yeah, that's pretty.
That's correct. That was one of those requested, and that's what the planning commission approved.
But I, I will add that that's true, I mean, traditionally, we've seen drastic reductions, reductions in buffers. Those buffers are for apartment complexes with three hundred units. They fall under the same concept, and so traditionally, I mean, obviously, it's up to council, but traditionally, they've been given a smaller buffer because they're far less impact than three hundred families when you've got forty-five seniors.
Do we still require some type of green space for this type of?
There's not a green space requirement per apartment that's part of the buffer setback. The other thing to consider with this one is, the majority of the buffering that you're doing with this project is buffering against existing apartments and other commercial properties.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry.
Mr. Collins, go ahead.
I'm sorry. I was looking at Hamilton Street, and it's, uh, I know that the one property has an insurance office there, some kind of insurance office. I think it's David Perry that backs up against that. And then it looks like there's maybe two vacant lots, uh, on Hamilton Street, you can see in the packet, and I'm assuming those are commercial? Would that be, are, are those, that's recent, those are vacant?
That's kind of a transitional area between residential and commercial, so it's a little bit of a mix between there, I don't know what they're zoned, they may not be annexed if they're not developed, um, so they wouldn't be in town, but that is a transitional area where you've got a home next to a business, that kind of thing.
Don't we require some green space for regular apartments?
No, ma'am.
Some type of green space, nothing?
No, ma'am.
Like when, is the developer for this here? Uh, so in the, when a developer, uh, brings something like this, like how, how far down the road are the plans? Like, do we, like in our packet, I don't see like a, a schematic, or is all that of the, of the actual apartment complex?
Maybe in your next, maybe in your next item. They presented all that, and they have it with them here tonight, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Williams.
Mr. Collins, I was at the, the work session for this. Uh-huh. I can tell you that the houses you're talking about on Hamilton Street, uh, two of those are in the county, but the setback was such that, um, the planning commission looked at the apartment complex, and then the, the, the two restaurants that are but, and the bank that are but, and the, the contractor was willing, there's actually going to be a, a road in between the two restaurants going out towards the real Centermas Plaza.
Right.
So, and the contractor agreed to put sidewalks there and sidewalks back out to the, uh, Citizens Drive, and it was brought up by the planning commission that a lot of these, or some, unfortunately, these apartments are two-bedroom, and it's usually one person living in a two-bedroom with a spare bedroom for when the grandkids come over to spend a night. So that's, that was the reasoning that, that, that was the conversation that was had in the room, and I believe that's how they, they came up to the one point two-five.
Can we, I see, I see Bill back there. Can we hear from the developer? I'd just like to, I'd like to hear, uh, from the developer on their experience with the, the parking numbers?
Sir, if you don't mind, please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Tim Harris. I'm with ASI Engineers out of Myrtle Beach, and one of the civil engineers for this project. Chris Whitner is with me, representing the developer. And if you would, I'll just put this up here. Let me first, and I'll, I will definitely address your question of parking, but I just wanted to give you an idea of what we're doing here. Uh, we are coming in, there's, uh, metal citizens bank here, I believe. I think there's, uh, Wynn's Place here, and a Mexican restaurant here, so we are pretty much surrounded by commercial, and I think it has been, I believe one of these lots actually has a house on it, although it is located quite, these are long lots, I think Hamilton's about a meter by scale, and that house is located there. So we're not really affecting, this is, uh, high-density apartments that are within twenty foot of the property line there, so we're, we're really not, um, creating too many buffer problems. As far as the parking of, this developer's been doing this type of work for over thirty years now. Uh, as part of the PUD document, we submitted a list of, and that should probably be in your packet, there is a list of about thirty projects that they've worked on over the years, and procedures, and we documented that the average space per unit is about one point one. Uh, we also have, uh, a couple of those surveys, we had, uh, we've actually submitted two or three of these over the last couple of years, and we did ask some questions from some of the other regulatory agencies about this, and, uh, we went and did a little survey, and found out that, uh, only about sixty percent of these residents actually own a vehicle, and that's why we're so concerned about, uh, the sidewalks, and we've provided sidewalks coming down here to tie into an existing sidewalk system as well as over here. So, uh, you know, also need to point out, this isn't like a condominium where a developer does something and, you know, goes in there and short-changes the parking and then walks away from it, and it's somebody else's problem. These people have been owning this for thirty years, and they've owned all these other ones for thirty years. They know what works and what doesn't. And, uh, you know, we feel like the one point twenty-five is generous. Again, we've got dozens of these all over the southeast, and we found that even with the one point twenty-five, we usually have empty parking spaces off just about all the time.
Yeah, it's, these, they're kind of two separate items in our deal. The PUD was down later, where, uh, where I didn't, I didn't see the site plan. Can you tell me, I mean, by scale, I'm looking at that, so the, uh, the setback to the residential lots or the, the lots that are off of Hamilton, that looks pretty significant by scale, but I can't really tell. I mean, is that fifteen, twenty feet? What is that?
It's about fifty feet. It's about fifty feet.
Fifty feet.
I think we've asked for a forty-five foot setback, but I believe that's a little bit on there.
Yeah, well, what, what was in our packet was a reduction of the buffers, or a reduction of the setbacks?
Probably both.
We've got a couple of spots. This right here, it's not really part of the project. This is a county-maintained road, and right there, we've got a smaller setback, so we asked for a minimum to account for that.
Okay.
But, uh, you know, we've, we've got, uh, I mean, again, when you get to the next section of PD date, there's a site plan, and that, you know, that's what we're sticking to, that's what we're planning on doing. My understanding, if we do anything different, we have to come back for, but anyways, you're going to get what you said.
Nice. All right. And I, I guess my final question, and then, uh, and I think it'll be done, is like, as this was brought in as a PUD, the landscaping requirements in those buffer areas, especially on that backside, I mean, are those clearly delineated in the PUD, what those, uh, screening or landscaping requirements are?
If there isn't a specific exception given, then it, you have to meet the current standard. So, so I don't believe that an exception was given for landscaping, meaning they'll have to meet the landscape tree ordinance for a property of that size.
Okay.
Which is certainly our intent.
All right. Perfect. That's what I needed. Thank you.
Any further questions? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed?
Thank you.
Very good. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Steve Baker, first reading of an ordinance, approving a planned unit development consisting of an age-restricted apartment complex with a small hair salon for resident use. Councilmember Steve Baker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and counsel. PLCW Trust and Terry Wayne Watt Trust are requesting approval of a planned unit development that consists of a forty-three unit senior apartment complex with a small hair salon. The project will be located at two-point-nine-four acres between Citizens Drive and North Point Drive. Access to the development will be available from both side, from both of these roads. Planned unit development approval is being requested to allow variances in the traditional zoning requirements for multifamily developments. This project differs from the normal multifamily requirements in the following ways. First, parking is reduced from eighty-six to fifty-four spaces. Second, buffers are reduced from one hundred to fifteen feet. Third, setbacks are reduced from one hundred and forty feet to forty-five feet, and density is increased from eleven units per acre to fourteen point six units per acre. The planning commission reviewed this PUD during their January meeting and recommended approval of the project. I make a motion for first reading approval.
Councilmember Baker makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Lyle, second to that motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Todd Lyle, first reading of an ordinance, amending section one-five-five dash zero-three dash zero-eight of the zoning ordinance required parking. Councilmember Todd Lyle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the aforementioned section of the zoning ordinance allows up to thirty-three percent of the required parking spaces in a commercial development to be designated as compact spaces. These spaces are two feet narrower than the state. These spaces are two feet narrower than the standard parking space. Oftentimes, a large number of compact spaces may go unused and has caused some complaints in certain developments. After discussing this issue with Planning Commission, the Planning Commission recommended amending this ordinance to limit the number of compact spaces allowed in commercial development to no more than 10% of the required parking spaces. Mr. Mayor, Baker, a motion for first reading approval of this amendment.
Councilmember Lyle makes a motion. Mayor Pretem, second. So motion, any further discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, one quick question.
Yes, sir, Mr. Cornes.
Talking too much tonight. Is there a, is there any requirement for these spaces to not be clustered together? Or can you cluster them all together? Does that, does that usually happen? Can you guys tell me, is like, is there a place where we've seen this be an issue?
So the New Lowe's grocery store is a good example?
Second that.
If you can, if you, that the row of parking, the entire row of parking that faces Hope Ferry, once you're inside, is compact spaces and it's probably excessive.
It's largely ignored.
It is largely ignored, or everybody takes up two spaces.
And Randy, you could tell me, do these spaces go from 10 to eight or nine to seven?
I don't know exactly. Nine foot is a normal space, nine to seven, so it's seven.
So these are seven-foot spaces?
It's closed, like we talked about. It's actually all across the doctor's care side.
Yes.
So it's a huge number of compact spaces. One thing, can we talk about this?
Thank you, Chief. Please come to the microphone.
One thing we did discuss in the Planning Commission that is probably just good to hear is that it's better to have, or we feel like, to a certain degree, it's better to have just less normal-sized spaces that can be used effectively than to meet the absolute maximum. So we were looking for some happy medium where you can have, okay, yes, there's some so that you can still kind of get close to the max. But wouldn't it, or allow an exemption, you know, if the space doesn't quite allow, but you prefer to have, because I know it's difficult to park SUV-sized vehicles in a regular space, much less compact spaces.
Yeah, there's, there's not a lot of compact cars running around Lexington. I know that. There's probably a lot more dinged-up doors now running around Lexington. Oh, well.
Very good. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Todd Cornes. First reading of an ordinance entering into a mutual aid agreement with the City of Myrtle Beach Police Department. Did I skip one?
Six.
I apologize. Our next item of new business is from Mayor Pretem Hazel Livingston. First reading of an ordinance amending section 154-06-18 of the Land Development Ordinance Dumpster Pads. Mayor Pretem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Background, this is section 154-06-18 of the Land Development Ordinance requires dumpster pads to have a drain that is tied into the sanitary sewer system. However, the treatment plant no longer accepts this type of effluent, making it necessary to amend this ordinance. During their January meeting, the Planning Commission recommended amending this ordinance to require dumpster pads to have a drain with an improved filter system that is tied into the stormwater system. I make a motion for first reading of approval on this.
Mayor Pretem makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Williams, second. So motion, any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir, Mr. Cornes.
Almost embarrassed to ask.
Please don't be.
This will, this will only apply to newly approved dumpster pads?
Yes, you don't have to retrofit. Matter of fact, most older dumpster pads don't have a drain.
Okay. And, I mean, develop-wise, do we have some kind of cost on what kind of filter system we're talking about? Is this a very simplistic filter system?
Yeah, think of a grease trap filled with sand. It's, so they were going to be putting a grease trap in with the old way. This way meets the requirements of the wastewater facility in Casey and still cleans the water.
So the primary expense is just figuring out a way to pipe it to stormwater system? Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Now we'll move on to item number seven. First reading of an ordinance entering into a mutual aid agreement with the City of Myrtle Beach Police Department. Councilmember Todd Cornes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Lexington Police Department is entering into a mutual aid agreement with the City of Myrtle Beach Police Department. This agreement is for Memorial Day Bike Weekend. The proposed agreement is attached. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion for first reading approval.
Councilmember Cornes makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mayor Pretem, second. So motion, any further discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Good luck, Chief. Y'all don't have too much fun that way. Yeah, I'll have fun with that.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Ron Williams. Boards and commissions liaisons appointments. Councilmember Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Following the town election, council reviews council liaisons and board member appointments for two-year terms. We have a list here of who's appointed to all the different committees. Just want to make a motion for council approval of reappointment.
Councilmember Williams makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mayor Pretem, second. Set motion, any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I want to say something briefly?
Yes, Mr. Lyle.
I believe I'm going to vote in affirmative for this, but I think in hindsight, I'm going to also want to look to see if we can either shorten this to one-year terms or have some encouragement to have these things rotated. Much like the staff officers in the Army, you work in different staff sections in order to better equip yourself to seeing all the different moving parts. And I think it'd be good for us to look at there being some type of a rotation schedule so that you won't have somebody sitting in one spot for entirely too long and not getting the opportunity for others to see it or for them to see other things, so.
Very good. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir, Mr. Williams.
I'll be glad to amend my motion to be a one-year appointment of these terms considering what Mr. Lyle just said. That way we can, we can look at a policy. Maybe next month, staff can bring us something to work session to look at. We can change the policy and we're rotating these terms out.
Sure.
I will second that amendment.
Mr. Williams makes an amendment to his original motion. Mr. Baker, second. Set motion, any further discussion?
But what y'all are saying is that you're voting, you're voting for this to go in as it is, but to go to a policy, I mean, to look at a policy.
One-year term instead of two-year term. And then council look at a policy to have these committees members rotate.
Very good. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Steve Baker. Pilgrim Point Streetlights, Councilmember Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Historically, the town has paid a portion of the streetlight bill for Pilgrim Point residents. In accordance with the town's residential streetlight ordinance, the Pilgrim Point Homeowners Association has requested that the town again pay a pro-rata share of their streetlight bill. Copy of their letter is attached. There are 48 lots in Pilgrim Point, and the town ordinance states that the town would be responsible for one streetlight per six lots, which equals eight lights. The total requested is $1,669. I make a motion for council approval.
Councilmember Baker makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Cornes, second. Set motion, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. That concludes our business for this evening. At this time, we will hear announcements from Councilmember Todd Lyle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And also thank you, Mr. Mayor, for delivering the state of the town address tonight. The video certainly gives a great overview of all the projects and things that we have done and the things that we continue to do, forward-thinking. So if anyone has any questions about any of the content that was shown in that video or the projects that you saw tonight, please contact Town Hall or staff or us as council and the mayor, and we'll be glad to answer your questions. We've got a busy schedule ahead for some of the boards. The Architectural Review Board will meet tomorrow morning at 9:00 a.m. here in the council chambers. Board of Zoning will meet Thursday here at 5:30 p.m. in the council chambers. And the Planning Commission will also meet on February 20th at 8:00 a.m. here in council chambers. Town Hall's closed Monday, February 18th, in observance of President's Day. And council will meet again on a Tuesday, February 19th, at 6:00 p.m. for a special called council meeting following the council work session in the Eli Mac Room. February 9th, the County, Lexington County Museum will host their free Murders and Mysteries walking tour at 8:00 p.m. starting at the I's House Amphitheater. Please visit museum's website for more information. Or you can email them at museum@lexco.com. Again, museum@lexco.com. February 16th, Friends of the Lexington County Museum will hold their annual fundraiser gala at 6:00 p.m. here at the Municipal Complex Conference Center. This year's theme is Letters from Veterans. Tickets are $60 in advance or $65 at the door. Please visit lexingtoncountymuseum.org for more information. February 23rd, Lexington County will hold a recycling event from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Riverbanks Zoo and Garden. Items are limited, so please visit www.lxco.sc.gov for more information. Thank you for watching your town council in action tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Lyle. Anyone else have anything they'd like to share?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir, Mr. Williams.
I received a call last week from Mr. Wade Sturkey over at Edie's Paint and Interiors. And it appears that Dan's guys, Dan and Johnny's guys were out with the parks crew trimming the trees down there. And he wanted a call to say how, what a great job and how much time they took to make sure it looked good and how they cleaned everything up. And I know it's part of our project to keep the trees out of the power lines. But appreciate your guys taking that much time and certainly taking care of our business owners and their interests as well.
Good job, Dan. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I wanted to...
Yes, Mayor Pretem.
I wanted to say something too in reference to Dan and Johnny both for what they're doing for the beautification in the parks throughout the town. I was, as y'all know, sick for about two weeks, but I got to come spend some time this past Friday with Johnny over here at the town and walking around and looking. And he's going ahead and making a difference even before the remodel on some of the cleanup and saving some of the big trees. And it's just, it's amazing to me to walk through and see what y'all are doing as a team and together and see everybody working so hard. And I really appreciate all that y'all are doing. And they're very much remembering, take something as they plant that Pat and I are so adamant about it, some of the plants and adding something new. And he's done such a great job at doing that. And I know, Dan, you encourage him and all that. And Johnny, I just wanted to say thank you for keeping our vision alive and doing all of that for us.
Very good. Thank you, Johnny. Anyone else have anything they'd like to share? Hearing none, I believe the news media has left. Yep. Any public comments tonight regarding tonight's agenda? Anyone here have anything they'd like to share about tonight's agenda? Hearing none, that concludes our business for this evening. Thank you for watching the town council meeting for the town of Lexington. This meeting was held at Town Hall on Monday evening, February 4th, 2019. A recording of this meeting will be aired on the town's information cable channel, 1301, several times during this week. And the video will be available on the town's website. On behalf of Town Council and staff, I want to wish you all a good evening. Without objection, we are adjourned.